To order. City of Lawrence Common Council. Meeting is now called to order. It's April 4th, 2022, and it's now approximately 6:41 PM. Can we all please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we come to you tonight humbly, Lord, just asking for your peace and your guidance to touch our city, to touch our constituents that are here tonight, and those that are in the city that they represent. I pray that you touch public safety, keep them safe as they are on the streets. And, Lord, I just pray that you continue to allow us all to hear one another and allow us to work together so that we can continue to make our city a better place. We love and praise you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Okay, all councilors are present. Next, we have comments of council members and special recognition or resolutions. Do we have any?
Madam President, I have one. I attended the crime watch meeting for Watson Farms on March the 24th at the Starett Center, and some of the residents were concerned about cars idling on Alexia Drive, Redmond Court, Twickenham, and Sharad's Court, and I believe Charstad Court. And the reason for this is that the parents don't wish to wait in the long lines at Fall Creek Valley Middle School, so they have them meet across the people's backyard from the parking lot of the school. So I suggested to have them talk to someone at Fall Creek Valley Middle School and let them know that there was a problem, and then go to the school board meeting and let them know that they had a problem with the parents, because the parents are, it's like congestion back there. And then there was another issue about, it was some miners that did some property damage in Watson Farms, and they wanted the parents to be accountable for that. And then the other one was Jacamo's Pizza. The lady Nancy, the representative, had called me about the detour signs, and she wanted to make sure that we wanted the citizens to be aware that they're still open Jacamo's and Cafe Audra and everything back there. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Madam President.
Councilor Russo-Moroff?
Sorry, my mic is low. I just wanted to remind everyone regarding the Shred It Day that will be April 23rd, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Belzer Middle School located at 7555 East 56th Street. And I thank the administration and other departments for helping put that on. It will take electronics, prescription drugs, and so forth, and you can look at the Facebook to get more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was just going to make one comment about one organization, but I see so many different folks in the audience from multiple organizations. I just want to remind everybody, there's a lot going on in the city of Lawrence, from the egg extravaganza that Matty Smiles is doing, to the Buffalo Parks, or the Butterfly Gardens that our Parks Foundation is doing, to the Latino Festival for Arts for Lawrence. There's just a tremendous amount of activity this month in our city. So check out the website and then check out these other organizations' websites. And I apologize if I left one off. I know there's a lot of, a lot of different organizations being represented tonight in the audience.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Madam President.
Ms. Council Wells?
At the old Marsh location on Franklin Road, like 5200, the new owner had promised us a grocery store, which would be a smaller scale of the original Marsh, but in a recent visit, there is progress being made. So we are tentatively looking to have a grand opening on that location, maybe late spring or early summer. So I'll keep everybody tuned in as to when the grand opening being, we'll all be there and take our shopping carts.
All right, good job.
Great, thank you. Any other councilors? Okay, seen none. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of regular meetings of March 7th and March 16th, 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, Councilor Russo-Moroff?
Second.
Second, Council Wells. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands to approve the minutes. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Council Denny?
Second.
Second, Council Whitfield. Any discussion? Seen none? All in favor by a show of hands to approve the vouchers. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have reports of committees, finance.
Madam Chair, I've got a small presentation to make for our committee. That has to do with just the large number of items that are on our agenda tonight that relate to finance. One second here. All right, so, so this is the Finance Committee report. Again, and I'll go over some of the items that are on tonight's agenda just as a refresher, because these items, we've discussed over multiple Finance Committee meetings. One thing I just want to point out and to think about as we go over these different items is our city finances are not too different from our family budget. And so sometimes these items can, you hear the term "general fund," but you're not really able to connect it or relate to it in some ways. So we can think of the general fund as our day-to-day expenditures, which on our family budget might be your checking account or your money market. Rainy day fund is an emergency or one-time-use items, and that would be maybe your savings account where you have your emergency fund set aside. And tonight, we've been talking about the stormwater fund, which can only be used for a specific purpose, which is rainwater, stormwater. That might be your health savings account or educational account. You can only use it for that specific purpose. The other item we're talking about, which is a kind of a fourth category that Lawrence has right now, is the American Rescue Plan Act. So if you hear the term ARC or ARPA, that's what we're referring to, the American Rescue Plan Act. This is the money that the city received, it's sort of free federal dollars. It was handed out due to COVID, and this funding is a use-it-or-lose-it funding, so we must spend it or we have to give it back. So ARPA, in the rules that went along with it, it encourages the funds to be used for infrastructure projects, which includes sewers, roads, and stormwater improvement projects. And this is one of the items that'll be on the public hearing tonight, number four. Part of what you'll see in number four is the plan that the council has already recommended and voted on and has been signed. So this is that plan that was signed last, at our last meeting. So sewer and wastewater funding, $2,050,000. That'll be matched by a grant for a total of $4 million going to sewer and wastewater. Personnel services, so tonight, the 5% bonus for all city employees, if passed, will be approved and be available for the city employees once, once that's processed by the Controller's Office. So hopefully that will, will go through quickly. The item you heard about tonight, if you were attending the Finance Committee, is the stormwater repairs and maintenance. The, the, the plan calls for $1.5 million to go towards stormwater repairs, another million dollars for street repairs and paving, and then $10,000 for our Parks Department programming, and another $10,000 for parks maintenance and upgrades, for a total of And again, this plan was approved at one of our last meetings, and tonight, we're actually allocating the funds towards the plan in the public hearing, proposal number four. So speaking of stormwater, what did we talk about tonight? So the stormwater plan being proposed tonight, this is number 10, proposal number 10, would allocate $7,831,632 over approximately the next year and a half. Once approved, we can have shovels in the ground immediately in the Rainbow Lane neighborhood, because the engineering has already been done on the project. Einheil Drive and Lawrence Terrace should be ready to break ground this year as well, and council has approved an engineering budget already within the general fund, and this would add to that. Funding sources are the American Rescue Plan and the stormwater user fees for this. So none of the funding will come out of the general fund for this stormwater. And so there's zero impact, I think this is a question that was brought up, there's zero impact to public safety or city administration budgets by funding the stormwater utilizing proposal number 10 and a combination of the ARC funds. So additional items before the council tonight, Madam Chair. Proposal number five, which is also up for public hearing, appropriation of additional funds and amending the 2022 budget with respect to the general fund. So it's like the title states, this is an appropriation from the general fund. It's a request from the City of Lawrence Fire Department, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but I believe, I remember you saying the funding is for outside improvements at parking lot, Station 37, and DEA mandated storage lockers on the EMS ambulances. And the Finance Committee has already recommended approval for that item. And additional items, public hearing, proposal number six, amended proposal number 16 regarding the rainy day fund transfer. This is also another appropriation from the general fund. This is to move money from our general fund, the checking account, over to the savings account, and the request is to move 1.5 million. The rainy day fund currently has a zero balance, and I believe we've had a zero balance for at least the last seven years. The proposal is to shore up the retirement benefits for all City of Lawrence Fire, police, and civil employees. And again, the Finance Committee has already recommended approval for this item. The other item, resolution number nine, is still in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Excellent job there.
Thank you, Council Denny.
Good job.
Okay, next on the agenda is the public hearing. I'm going to open up for public hearing for proposal number four, 2022. Proposal number four, 2022, introduced by Council Chevlat. A proposal for an ordinance to appropriate from the ARP Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act. Okay, I do not see anyone signed up to speak for proposal number four, 2022. Last opportunity. Seen no one. Public hearing is now closed for proposal number four, 2022. I will now open up for public hearing for proposal number five, 2022. Proposal number five, 2022, introduced by Council Russell. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana appropriating additional funds and amending the 2022 budget with respect to the general fund. Okay, no one has signed up to speak on proposal number five, 2022. One last opportunity. Seen none. Public hearing for proposal number five, 2022, is now closed. I will now open up public hearing for proposal number six, 2022. Proposal number six, 2022, introduced by Council Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana amending proposal number 16, 2021 regarding the rainy day fund transfer. Okay, no one has signed up to speak on behalf of proposal number six, 2022. Last opportunity. Seen none. Proposal number six, 2022, the public hearing is now closed. Next on the agenda, we have unfinished business. Proposal number four, 2022. Proposal number four, 2022, introduced by Council Chevlat. A proposal for an ordinance to appropriate from the ARP Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve proposal number four.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Motion, Council Denny? Second, Council Whitfield?
We amended it. Number four was amended, so we accept the amended. Did we?
No, the, the plan was amended, not the funding. Yeah.
Okay, amend, accept the amended.
Okay, so can I get a motion to accept the amended version, proposal number four?
I'd like to make the motion.
Motion, Council Denny?
Second.
Second, Council Whitfield. Any discussion? Seen none. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion carries unanimous. For the amended version of proposal number four, now we need a motion to accept proposal number four, 2022.
I'd like to.
Motion to accept.
Motion, Council Chevlat?
Second.
Second, Council Denny. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have proposal number five, 2022. Proposal number five, 2022, introduced by Council Russell. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana appropriating additional funds and amending the 2022 budget with respect to the general fund. A motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve.
We have a motion? We have a second, Council Russell? Any discussion? Seen none. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have proposal number six, 2022. Proposal number six, 2022, introduced by Council Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana amending proposal number 16, 2021 regarding the rainy day fund transfer.
Again, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Motion, Council Denny?
I'd like to make a second.
Second, Council Giles. Any discussion? Seen none. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have resolution number seven, 2022. Resolution number seven, 2022, introduced by Council Russell. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana approving the issuance of bonds of the City of Lawrence Redevelopment District. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion, Council Whitfield?
I'll second.
Second, Council Russo-Moroff. Any discussion? Seen none. All in favor by a show of hands. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have proposal number 10, 2022. Proposal number 10, 2022, introduced by Councilors Denny and Giles. A proposal for an ordinance appropriating additional funds and amending the 2022 budget as approved by the Common Council with respect to the stormwater fund.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval for proposal number 10.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
Do we have to have a public hearing?
Oh, yeah, I don't have to go to public.
We have to have a public hearing.
Okay. So the public hearing will be scheduled on that.
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm.
I'll get back with you.
Okay.
There will be a public hearing scheduled for proposal number 10, 2022. Next, we have new business. Proposal number 11, 2022. Proposal number 11, 2022, introduced by Council Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana appropriating additional funds and amending the 2022 budget with respect to the general fund. Okay, that will be assigned to finance.
Madam Chair, just a clarification on that, since it deals with parks, do you want it also in the Parks Committee or one and then the other?
I'd like you to go in finance first.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have resolution number eight, 2022. Resolution number eight, 2022, introduced by Council Russell-Moroff. A resolution honoring Linda K. Wells' treat for her service to the City of Lawrence, Indiana upon her passing.
Madam Chair, could we have the whole resolution?
We are, definitely, that's my intention. We're going to read that resolution in its entirety.
Would you want to read it? Let me read it. Council Russo-Moroff, would you like to read it?
No, please go ahead.
Let me read it. Sure. Okay.
A resolution honoring Linda K. Wells' treat for her service to the City of Lawrence, Indiana upon her passing. Whereas the City of Lawrence lost a valued leader when Mrs. Linda K. Wells' treat, a Common Council member of District 2 from 2003 to 2015, and a former mayoral candidate, passed away on February 27th, 2022. And whereas, Council Treat moved to Lawrence as a teenager and graduated from Lawrence Central High School in 1966, serving the school district as a member and president of Lawrence Elementary PFO and running the district's spook house, which benefited the crossroads of America throughout the 1970s. And whereas, Linda, through the next two decades, Council Treat was the office manager for her family-owned business, T&amp;M Associates, and also worked for Rolls Construction as a medical records manager for MedCheck and as a real estate agent for FC Tucker. And whereas, Council Treat established the Harrison Park Neighborhood Crime Watch founded and was the president of Harrison Park Neighborhood Association from 1996 to 2009. And whereas, Council Treat worked on many charitable and fundraising events, including the Shop With a Cop program, which helped families in need during the holidays, St. Jude's Children's Hospital, and the Autism Community in Action, TACA. And whereas, Mrs. Linda Treat Wells was a mother, daughter, sister, wife, friend, and a true leader. He was dedicated to making Lawrence the best city it could be, any better place to live for everyone. Sorry. Now therefore, be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Lawrence as follows. The Common Council of the City of Lawrence, the council recognizes the significant contributions of Councilor Linda K. Wells' treat over the course of her distinguished service to the community, and celebrates her legacy of service to the City of Lawrence, the mayor, the city clerk, and the common council, and all city employees extend our sincerest condolences to her family, friends, and colleagues. The resolution shall be in full force and effect from its adoption by the common council and approved by the mayor in compliance with Indiana Code 36-3-4-14. Thank you so much. It's hard to read.
Sorry.
Okay, so resolution number eight, 2022. I think I'm gonna have Council Wells make the motion on that one.
I'd like to make a motion to accept that, please.
I have a motion? Second, Council Russo-Moroff? Any discussion or comments? Seen none. All in favor by a show of hands? Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have resolution number nine, 2022. Resolution number nine, 2022, introduced by Council Chevlat. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana approving the issuance of stormwater revenue bonds of the City of Lawrence Storm Water Management District and matters related thereto. Okay, so that is still in finance, I understand.
Correct.
And your next meeting?
Has not been scheduled yet.
Okay, so stay tuned for the next meeting on that. Do you all have any items for discussion or anything as a council on resolution number nine? It is still in finance, so we'll be able to ask questions again, but I just wanted to give you that opportunity. Okay, seen none. Comments of the administration?
Good evening, everybody. Dave Hoffman, Chief of Staff, in Mayor Collier's office. It's good seeing you all again. We have so many great activities occurring in Lawrence, they are really too numerous to mention, and I know the meeting's getting a little long, so I'll just focus on a few that I felt were really worthy to highlight that are coming up this month. More information on all of these events that I'm about to mention can be found on the city's website. April 16th, the Free Spring Fling Easter Egg Hunt with crafts, face painting, goodies will be at Lawrence Community Park. That's for all, it's for kids of all ages. This year, we're partnering with the Fort Benjamin Harrison YMCA and Arts for Lawrence to make this the biggest and most enjoyable Easter egg hunt ever. It'll be rain or shine, 10:00 AM to noon, and we're doing age-specific times so that it's a fair Easter egg hunting experience for everybody. In other words, three-year-olds won't be competing with 10 and 11-year-olds. April 21st is the Great Lawrence Cleanup. It'll be conducted by dozens of City of Lawrence employees from all departments. You can look for them at all locations all over the city on that day, April 21st. Later on in that, that day, the exact same day, April 21st, the City of Lawrence Employment and Resource Fair will be from 3:30 to 5:30 PM at Lawrence Community Park. It'll be a great place to learn about summer and long-term job opportunities for anyone in search of or need of employment. The weekend of April 22nd through the 24th, the FC Pride Soccer Tournament will draw thousands of youth soccer players to Lawrence Park. There'll be those fields that are just north of the police station and south of DeFas. As Council Russo-Moroff mentioned, on Saturday, April 23rd, is the Spring Shred It Day at Belzer Middle School from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This benefits Crime Stoppers of Indiana, which is obviously a great cause that helps keep our community safe. As Council Denny mentioned earlier, on April 30th, there will be an early celebration of our Latino friends and neighbors to include customs, food, entertainment, overall culture. It's gonna be a blast. It's called Fiesta Lawrence, and it'll be on the Saturday preceding Cinco de Mayo. This celebration will bring together hundreds of friends from all over Lawrence and surrounding communities from 1:00 to 5:00 PM at the beautiful cultural campus near Post Road and Otis Avenue. And that's just the month of April. We've got a lot more events coming up that I will be, or I or somebody from the administration will be announcing. So, and speaking of celebrating Latino culture, I want to highlight one of our team members who is dedicated to community outreach to our Latino population, our very own Latino Affairs Communications Manager for the city, Damaris Irajita. I'm sorry, I always have trouble pronouncing that, but she was recently nominated for the 2022 Center for Leadership Development's Minority Achievers Award for her outstanding performance in our city and her outreach efforts. Damaris is truly a gifted, valuable, respected member of our staff, and if you haven't had a chance to meet her yet, please make every attempt to do so. Her office is just over here by DPW, and she keeps normal working her office hours. So I'll transition now from events and honoring stuff to something that maybe a lot of people don't like, and that is construction, right? Nobody likes construction, but everybody loves the improvements that follow. Construction's to improve drainage are in full swing all over the city. Water main replacement work is occurring on Franklin Road, Wallingwood Drive, Richart Street, Record Street, Cellar Street, just to name a few. Major water system improvements are in progress at two Lawrence water treatment plants and water storage facilities, and this really will help us continue to deliver the best water in the state of Indiana to our residents. So far this year, as of this afternoon, we have So far this year, as of this afternoon, we have filled 2,792 potholes in the City of Lawrence. Last month, you all led a round of applause for the great work of our street department employees, which was, and still is, richly deserved. It is a never-ending battle, but they are winning the fight. And I'd like to make this reminder, too. Citizens can report potholes on our city's website for prompt attention. That's the quickest way to get them filled, is if we know about them, and that can, you can go to cityoflawrence.org to find that tab for that. There are some major projects on the Lawrence horizon that will be transformative for our great city. As you are all aware, the Indigo Purple Line Project recently started construction near Ivy Tech on 59th Street. I'm told by the construction engineer that that project, in Lawrence anyway, will be done by August. So this will help make our city an attainable destination for our Indianapolis neighbors and make our city more inviting and reachable for those who may not have transportation, so that they can enjoy our amenities, restaurants, and attractions. There are many other projects in the planning phases right now, including a massive Endot project along Pendleton Pike that will improve safety for our motorists and pedestrians and expand connectivity in areas along that stretch from 465 to, I think, 62nd Street out by the post office. And you will be hearing more about that in months to come, because we're gonna have to announce, you know, some street, or some lane restrictions and things like that. Obviously, Endot's gonna be in charge of that, but we're gonna partner with them and make sure our residents know what's, exactly what's coming and when. Our parks are the hidden gems of the City of Lawrence. Our parks employees are working on many improvements in all 11 City of Lawrence parks, 11, to make them more attractive, safe, enjoyable, inviting. And update on the pickleball courts on Lee Road Park, they, we hope to have them open for play mid-month, as in mid-this month. As I wrap up here, so there are, I just wanna let you know, there are some very well-known businesses and organizations that are flocking to the Lawrence community with plans for very positive influencers choosing Lawrence as a place to call home. So proud of that. Future specific announcements are coming soon, but one that everyone does know about is the second-largest branch of the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library, and we look forward to attending a groundbreaking ceremony later on, just this week, to celebrate this addition to the community. The earthwork has been going on about a month now, and they're getting some underground, some water works and so forth, so that'll be coming out of the ground very soon. So these are just a few of the things we've been working on that are noteworthy, that you also, many of those, you have been working on. So thank you for granting me the time to share this information, so everyone we serve is well-informed about what's happening in our city. We do utilize social media platforms such as Facebook and Twitter, and of course, the city's website, and the newsletters, Lawrence Lift, and Latest in Lawrence, to keep our residents up to date. I encourage everyone to log on to our social media and check us out. We're updating it almost every day, every business day, there's an update about what's going on in our city on one of those platforms. So I and along with the entire Lawrence leadership team, we remain available to you and all of our citizens to answer questions, listen to concerns, and take all comments into consideration. And finally, once again, we can all be reached via our contact information, which is posted very clearly on the cityoflawrence.org website. So with that, I will conclude, and I thank you again for the time to update our citizens about what's going on. Thank you.
Next, we have citizens' comments. First, we have Robert Schleifer. If you can step forward, sir, state your name and address for the record.
Robert Schleifer, 10423 Rainbow Lane. Thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity to speak this evening. Over a year and a half ago, Lawrence withdrew from the Marion County Stormwater District, clearing the way to make decisions locally. Promise after promise, there's no end in sight. We get numbers of reasons, and we want to be creative on our financing, and it goes on and on, all the reasons we're getting promises and promises, we're not getting them. All of this debate that's going on, a very wise person once said this, and I think it fits. Perfection is the enemy of progress. As we continue to volley this topic back and forth, always trying to find a hole, a punctuation mark, a hole to poke in it, it just further and further delays what needs to occur to address this public health and safety concern. It's now time for you to act on behalf of your constituents and get shovels in the ground. This council's inability to address these public health and safety concerns is an embarrassment to the City of Lawrence. Thank you.
Next, we have David Strauss. Sir, if you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, David Strauss, 5971 Twickenham Drive. Thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to speak tonight, and thank you all for your service. I wanted to touch on Councilor Freeman's point about Watson Farms and the drop-off and pickup of the parents dropping off their kids and picking them up for the school behind us. Drawing a blank on the name.
All Creek Valley?
What was it?
All Creek Valley.
All Creek Valley, thank you. So, there's three streets that are being hit right now with all these pickups and drop-offs. Hardkey, Hardkey, Alexia, and Redmond. They're all cul-de-sacs, and they're blocking, they're parking and blocking people's driveways, and people have actually asked them to move so they can get out of their driveway. They ignore them with their windows up, and they won't move. So, and we have several Watson Farms folks here tonight as well to show their support. But we're, we're learning what to do here. We know we need to take the next step, go to the school board, but also, we would like to ask if there's a way we could put some signage, maybe, I don't know if I'm saying this right, but create an ordinance of certain times that you can't park, so then the officers could come in and possibly ticket those that are in there blocking the streets and driveways. It, 'cause it gets very congested, and it's annoying to, every day, 7:00 a.m., 3:30, and people are turning around in driveways every day. I'm on the HOA there, I'm getting calls, I'm, you know, and as a resident. And my fear is, if we only put these at three streets and not on Twickenham, people, they're gonna go out there and have their kiddos walk further, and then you have safety issues as well. So, and I would like for anybody that's with Watson Farms to stand up just to show your support here, please.
Wow. It's a big concern, I see. Thank you for your attendance tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Lucas.
Good evening, my name is Chris Lucas. Our address is 9939 Alexia Drive. Thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am here to follow up our HOA Board Member David Strauss's comments about the pickup-drop-off concern that we have at Watson Farms. Excuse me for having never done this before, so I hope you will excuse my little bit of a free-form ad lib conversation here, but how many of you have children at home? Or have had children in the past at home? How many of you would sacrifice the safety of your children for convenience? Not a single one of you, that's a unanimous vote. The issue that we're having at Watson Farms isn't just about the damage to our homes, our driveways, that one member or one resident here has voiced to me about people backing up and backing out and scratching or damaging the concrete in their driveway. It isn't just about blocking driveways and inconveniencing homeowners. It isn't just about traffic. It's a safety concern. There are children walking up and down these sidewalks, across driveways, every single morning and every single evening. It is a safety concern. People are trying to back out of driveways, they are driving up and down cul-de-sacs, leaving for work, returning for work, taking their kids to school the right way. There is also the fact that Twickenham Drive, being a, as far as I know, a City of Lawrence street, not a private drive as part of Watson Farms, people blast through Twickenham Drive 30, 40 miles an hour. It has been addressed at the HOA Board meetings, I believe it's probably been addressed here, it's been addressed in private conversations amongst homeowners. It's an issue. It needs to be addressed. I understand that another step would be to go to the school board. As far as I know, we moved into Watson Farms in July, we attended our first HOA Board meeting this past fall. That's already happened. They've already sent out letters to parents. Parents have ignored it. I have personally stepped into the street to stop parents, asking them, "Do you live in this neighborhood?" "No." "Do you live on this street?" "No." "Well, why are you doing this?" "We just want to. We, we don't care." And then they just drive off. It's not just about the damage that's being caused, the inconvenience, the nuisance, or the annoyance, it's about the safety of the children of this neighborhood, and I really think that we need to make some sort of priority beyond that. I love David's idea of implementing some sort of signage that could potentially allow the police officers to patrol more and ticket during certain hours. Unfortunately, we have a lot of people that park on the streets in our cul-de-sacs throughout Watson Farms. I would almost pose a better solution of allocating some sort of funds to have a safety officer or a police officer positioned along Twickenham Drive to advise parents or prevent them from going down these cul-de-sacs, or to direct them towards the exits, towards the proper pickup and drop-off zones for their kids for Fall Creek Valley Middle School. I'm not sure if it's a doable solution or not, you know? Money's a fickle thing, so, again, I appreciate your time this evening. I'm not sure if there's anything else I'm supposed to say to end it, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your comments. We're adjourned, have a good evening, everyone.